Hey everyone, welcome back to Keeping Up with the Caldians. I'm your host Junior Bindu along with Anthony Toma, my co-host. And today we are bringing on Yolanda Charles, who is looking to shoot for the 17th district seat for county commission. We're here to give her a hand just to see what she can offer to the community that most of you stay in. And we want to give her a warm welcome and let her know what she's got to offer for the public. How are you today, Yolanda?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Awesome to have you here today.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Anthony, it's good to have you back and see us back on the set together.
Yeah, it feels good.
So, we've had a little COVID timeout right now, so back into the spring of things. So, Yolanda, let's talk a bit about who Yolanda Charles is first. Where have you been in the community and where forward progress is gonna be?
Thank you. I grew up in the city of Southfield. I've been there since I was about three years old. I like to tell people I was born in Detroit and raised in Southfield. And so, my grandparents, the Norwoods, were one of the first families to move into, African-American families, to move into the city of Southfield. My mom, in fact, was one of the first five African-Americans students at Southfield High School when, you know, the school was still very, very new. And so, I grew up in a household that really believed in community engagement, really felt it was important to, at the very bare minimum, at least vote. But to even take it further by advocating for candidates, you know, signs in yards, just encouraging people to participate in the process. And so, I graduated from Southfield Public Schools. I went there pre-K through 12. And after leaving Southfield High, I went on to Hampton University in Virginia, where I got my bachelor's in business management.
Nice.
With an emphasis in informational technology. And so, with that, I have always had a passion for technology. In fact, I tease folks and say, like, I was the girl who actually liked Radio Shack. For those of us old enough to remember Radio Shack. But I would love, you know, the little toys, our C cars, things like that. So, those were, you know, little fabrics of me who has been able to maintain as I've gotten into my adult life. And so, after Hampton, I actually came back and started teaching at, in Southfield Public Schools. So, very full circle. And when I, I was subbing as a substitute teacher long-term. In other words, I would have a classroom for three, four, or five months as opposed to, you know, just one day. And I developed a lot of relationships in the school district. But uniquely, in 2007, the school district decided to privatize secretaries. And for those in the community who may or may not know about privatization, it's about where you outsource. It's basically a nice term for outsourcing. And so, the secretaries, excuse me, the substitute teachers were outsourced. And I was pink slipped. And I was, you know, pretty bummed, but in hindsight, I was like, I really needed to be pink slipped. I had too much skill to just be doing substitute teaching. So, I looked at it as a gift, you know? Sometimes the good Lord closes a door and opens windows. And so, needless to say, I pink slipped and a couple of years later decided to run for the Southfield Board of Education based on that. And so, I was successful in that in 2011. So, that's pretty much my backstory. So, I've been on the Southfield Board of Education since 2011. I actually ran as a write-in, if you can believe it, my first time.
Are you still?
I'm still on the board, yes. And in fact, I won in 2010 with 104 write-ins. And that's a very important piece to me because it just lets you know that every little bit counts. And so, I've been serving in that capacity. I was board president for a couple of years, secretary, vice president, and treasurer. So, I feel very, very confident that I've learned all of the roles with the Board of Education, so.
What's some of the day-to-day stuff you do as being on the board for education, especially with the fact that we're running into such a crunch on education right now?
Yeah, so I'm very grateful for what we do with the board. It's important because people will come up to me in the community and they're like, "Where's your office?" You know, "Where's your office on the district?" And I'm like, you know, in Southfield Public Schools, I can't speak about other districts. You know, you don't have an office. There's no district car, district phone. You do get an email address. And the occasional chicken meal, you know, sandwich or something. But what we are all about is policy, budget, and higher fire evaluating the superintendent. So, the superintendents are one employee. We find ourselves in trouble as school board members when we start asking staff and, you know, teachers about what's going on. We try to stick with just our one employee, our superintendent. We've got a rock star superintendent right now in Southfield. I do want to make sure though, I say Southfield Public Schools. People in my community know Southfield Public Schools also includes Lathrop Village. So, when I run or when we advocate for public schools, you know, it's the city of Southfield and the city of Lathrop Village. I don't want them to feel left out.
What schools are these?
So, yeah, I can name. And we've, since 1980s, we've locked, you know, we've closed a lot of buildings. But we still have Kennedy Learning Center, which is working with our most severely in need students. So, they may, you know, they may have severe medical things that are happening to them that they need more structure. So, Kennedy Learning Center on Mount Vernon is doing great things there. Obviously, our comprehensive high school, Southfield High School for the Arts and Technology. And then, of course, we've got our K5s, our K8s. We have a wonderful Head Start program. The director over there and her staff are doing amazing things, working with young people under the age of five to make sure, you know, the state of Michigan has very stringent requirements on reading. They want students to be able to read at a certain level by the third grade. And if they are not able to, school districts are penalized. You know, and that can come in the form of financial penalization as well as just the state sending people in to make decisions that should be made at the local level. So, those are just some of our schools. But we've got University High School that I'll finish with saying, which is just leading the way in the state. We're in the top 20 in the state. I would venture top 50 in the country in terms of educating students. And then, we are a great feeder program of African-American students into the University of Michigan. Like, they look at us for being able to be that pipeline for them. So, we are excited to add that diversity to the school.
A little question, just because of the nostalgic moments I've had with this school. But what happened to Lathrop, Southfield Lathrop? Like, it was such a huge, and it was very diverse. And it was really cool because they named each wing after a particular culture. I don't know if you ever remember that. There was A Wing, B Wing, C Wing. So, each one of them named it after a different culture.
D Wing, I remember.
And it sounds like it's alphabetical, but it's not because there was a J Wing. They threw the J Wing in there.
I gotcha. That's actually good.
What ended up, yeah, like?
Yeah. So, in 2016 roughly, we decided to merge our two high schools. So, that was the one on Loser and the one on 12 Mile. And although very unpopular, it polls very poorly, but it was called Imagine 2020. And it's ironic that we are here now in 2020. But it was, the vision was to basically just shore up our resources so that, I mean, we had some buildings at 30 and 40% occupancy. And we were talking about heating and cooling and lawn service.
It's a smart economic move. I mean, they did it in Bloomfield Hills as well, you know? So, they do it, it's not, they do it all, all the time.
And it's definitely a polarizing topic. I mean, I'm an alum. I have alum friends, you know, people who've gone before and after. And all of them seem to be just fine with the merger. It was actually parents of the students who were in the building at the time that were really fighting back. And so, so fast-forwarding though, what we ended up doing, and the board was very adamant about this. I was one of the people who I'd like to say was championing it. But we didn't want Lathrop, the city of Lathrop, because even my mom, bless her, would always say Southfield Lathrop as though it was the city of Southfield Lathrop. And I was like, you know, people in Tampa get mad when people call it Tampa Bay because it's actually called, you know, the city of Tampa. So, we decided, instead of taking the marquee down that said Lathrop, we decided to make it University High School Academy at the Lathrop campus. Because it was, you know, very important for our community members in Lathrop to know that they still had our support and that we were still very supportive of them. And so, that's the story. And the beautiful part about it is we had enough students in our university high program, in our middle school, in our K8, to be able to fill that building without having to basically abandon it and make it a vacant building. So, I think residents are happy that it's not vacated.
Nice. What's the getting back to school plan, if there is one? If the governor allows us to get back to school?
Yeah. So, we just had a meeting on Tuesday. Community members were very anxious to find out where the direction of the school district was going. And so, superintendent, who's actually on the governor's roundtable of, you know, leaders, movers and shakers in education. And as a result, she was able to be at the table. I always tell people, "You're either at the table or on the table." And so, thankfully, our superintendent was at the table, helping to make decisions. And so, the decision that came out on Tuesday was to open in September on our normal day, but virtually. So, they won't be face-to-face. The way she looked at it, it was where we're basically still Phase 3, Phase 4. And according to that chart, it dictates virtual. But she is, and you know, we're fully in support of it, where each month, we're gonna go back and recalibrate. So, if a month from now, we're at like Phase 4, then we can do kind of a hybrid model where some students will go to, you know, face-to-face, some will do virtual. And so, when we get a little bit further in our conversation, when we talk about infrastructure, I do want to mention, you know, some things about how important it is for us virtually.
Sure. What do you do about families that don't have the virtual capability?
Yeah, I mean, that is definitely still a major concern. Our superintendent, thankfully, has been able to garner tons of grants as well as commitments from nonprofits and other community liaisons to help shore it up. So, fortunately, right now, our district is one-to-one in terms of technology. So, we have a Chrome, one Chromebook per every student. And that was an investment made over the last five years, not even knowing we would be in this predicament. And so, that's, that's one beautiful thing. But, you know, it still requires that wireless.
Yeah, still need internet.
What I understood, some cities are working with the major, the major providers, Comcast, Xfinity, and whatever's in the area to try to see if they can work a free Wi-Fi program for that, so.
Xfinity has been really, really strong in that. I have to shout them out. I know we all have a checklist of things we can't stand about them. But in that regard, they're great partners, yeah.
Guess who we can't live without?
I know.
Yeah, go figure.
So, let's get into your campaign. What is, what are the duties of a county commissioner?
Right, so I am Yolanda Charles, running for Oakland County Commissioner in the District 17. And it's important to know that the county commissioner is basically the legislative body for the county. And so, most people have a familiarity with Congress, familiarity with state reps, and folks like that. And so, each county will also have a board. And so, ours is called a Board of Commissioners. And we have, we used to have upwards of 24 with 2010's census. You know, those, that data changed, which is another plug for the census. Make sure people are taking that seriously.
Yeah, we've been pushing for that.
Yeah, absolutely.
We did a little episode on the census.
That's great.
Trying to push people to get.
Voting and census. I never looked at them together like that until this year.
We didn't believe in it. We didn't either. Some of the stuff that we're seeing from, you know, you guys running for your campaigns and people who put on, we're understanding more the importance of what's needed behind the scenes.
Oh, yeah.
You gotta be counted.
You do, you do. So, what the county commissioners do, particularly in Oakland County, is they are completely over policy. So, you know, I'll share people, you know, if there's a noise ordinance or, what do you call it? Not pollution ordinance, but like litter and waste and things like that. Protecting our lakes in the county, you know, making sure that the roads are funded properly. Everything A to Z, policy-wise, that's what's gonna come out of the county. Then, outside of that, they are going to approve the budget. So, our executive, whoever that might be, come, let's say, January, would put forth a budget. And then, the county commissioners would decide if that budget was appropriate and they would approve that. And then, finally, they're basically just the representatives. So, some people might call that a delegate to the community as far as what decisions need to be made. So, it gives each segment of the county a voice at the table, whereas without, they wouldn't have that so much. So, that is the role of the commissioner.
Where does the commissioners land in the tree of political seats?
Right, so I would think, when we look at it in terms of tiers, you've got federal, state, local. We would be right in that fine space between local and state. So, you've got local representatives such as your city council, you know, your mayors, things like that. And then, I think of state as, you know, obviously, state house and state senate. So, when, for example, federal government sends money to the state of Michigan to help cities, they usually put that money through the counties. So, that's how it's rolled out. With the most recent, I believe it was PPP for small business and stuff like that, that did not come from your state houses and state congress. It actually was rolled through your county.
Oh, really?
So, another big thing that most people overlook is county health. So, right now, with COVID-19 going around, the county is really gonna be your main source of qualified information because they're getting that directly from the CDC and other places like that. So, it's important, and that's kind of where I'm seeing some opportunities. You know, Anthony, we talked a little bit about where are some of the gaps with the current leadership. And so, that would be an example where, you know, it's month seven going on month eight. No, it's month eight of the year, now that I think about it.
Today's the day.
And we've, I mean, I, and I live with two other adults who are residents, have yet to get anything from our current elected official at the county in District 17 to set our souls at ease, you know, about what's all going on. So, it's low-hanging fruit, as far as I'm concerned. A newsletter, an Instagram account where you can keep people posted on what's going on. And so, that, that is one of the reasons I'm running, is to make sure that the people in District 17 are aware of resources that are coming out of the county. I've already talked about health and small business support. And right now, those are probably the two top things people are seeking. So, education-wise, we won't really get into that. And that's one of the reasons why, as a county commissioner, you could technically still be a school board member. There's some people in Oakland County who have done that. Southfield Public Schools is so dynamic that that would not be something for me to hold both of those seats. I would really want someone to have 100% focus on the school district. But that is wise because there's no real overlap there.
But they can always lean on you for.
Oh, absolutely. And to advocate as well, because sometimes there are grants and other pieces of information that might be helpful for schools.
What is District 17, what is that?
Great question, thank you. I wanted to make sure to articulate that. District 17 comprises three cities. Two of them is just half the cities. So, that's Oak Park, where I'm planning to represent Coolidge to Greenfield. And then, Southfield, which would be Evergreen, yeah, Evergreen to Greenfield. So, now we've got that whole situation. And then, it goes up to 13, so 8 to 13 roughly. But, you know, they can make it easy. Once you get back over Greenfield, then it's actually up to 11. So, I represent a portion of Oak Park, a portion of Southfield, and then, the entire city of Lathrop Village is tucked away neatly.
You know, and I want to just touch just real quick on that so people understand. You're running currently as Democrat. Democrats, Republicans, you're gonna be in this section. There's a possible Republican can be in that next section. So, at the end of the day, what people need to understand, you guys are gonna end up working together at some point, right? There's a point that you're gonna cross paths. You still have to share work together. There still has to be a common good. No matter what beliefs are one side to the other, you still are gonna have your dealings that are gonna be dealt. So, in regards to that, you are looking to be a people person. You are here to take care of the people. That's what your district is looking to bring up, you know? So, those cities, they've come a long way. You have worked with the African-American community heavily. But you also have touched our community as well, that's been heavily invested in that area, both in schools and in there. So, for some of us, we may need to lean on it still, right? Because we do deal with still living in Southfield and other parts of, in Oak Park, still, we still deal with it, so.
So, that was important to me, and one of the reasons I was excited to chat with you guys is because, and my dear friend and colleague Sally, when I spoke to her and I said, "I don't want to pander to Caldians." I feel like in our society, particularly this year, people are more inclined to want to know about others' history and what foundations they have. When I think about going to Thompson Middle School back in the mid-'90s, you know, we were a very big mixing pot. I really appreciated that. And I had friends who, you know, were considered Arab, were considered Caldian. And we didn't even understand at that time even the real distinction.
We didn't, we didn't either believe in that some.
And then, we get into the Christianity piece. And it's just important that we all have conversation and tear down some of those barriers where you feel uncomfortable asking. And like I said, I was like, "I don't want to sound like I'm pandering, but I really want an opportunity to learn from a community as well as be able to shed like my light onto the community." So, that's why I feel like Lathrop and Southfield, and even portions of Oak Park, really are a wonderful mixing bowl of different folks who are getting along and cooperating as neighbors. So, thank you.
And I'm glad, I thank you two for making that statement. Because when Anthony put a person in campaign running last week, you had posted that he was not Caldian. We've also had another person looking to run for prosecutor. Somebody side-messaged and asked that, and I'm glad that he did that. They said, "We thought this is a Caldian show." I said, "You must not have been paying attention to the other episodes then." This isn't a Caldian show just based on that. We have a lot invested with your community, and you have a lot invested with our community, you know? It works both ways. People don't understand that. You know, we did a lot from Detroit on down. But the point about what you said is, we still have to learn a lot more about your culture and you still have to learn a lot more about our culture. Because we only knew, just like, "I'm your friend." That's all we just, okay, we came to eat at each other's house. But what's our history? Where did we come from? You know, where have we all gone through our own persecutions or problems and racism and all that? The issue we have as Caldians is, we are not known as, recognize as minorities because of the fact that we were, we have multiple segments of our race. So, because of that, we have fought for tooth and nail to do what we have to do through our own hustles and grind and working. But we're now coming to the point where we may have to come, like you said, and say, "Hey, I don't have some of the benefits that our family has," "but I do need a loan through the county or somehow to get me through this PPE and stuff," or PPP. People didn't have that. Some people didn't have that opportunity to do that because they didn't know the know-how's or, you know? So, resources weren't there. So, is that what you would bring to the table?
Yes, and, and, you know, an old adage about it takes a village. I mean, we can only get so far leaning on just one, you know, table leg. We have to have multiple. And so, for me, that's why it was like, yes, absolutely want to come chat, but even beyond the chat, look for ways to partner and to, you know, continue the conversation. There's a lot of things that people admire about your history and about your culture. You know, that family element that you have. You know, African-Americans, we're big on family too. And I feel like that's some of the, you know, entry point to being able to have camaraderie. It's easier to get along when you, when you understand where people are coming from. I know that in the community, people feel like, you know, certain ethnicities are always running businesses or, you know, involved in this way. How can we bridge the gap, partner, and come up with professional development opportunities to help others? So, without chatting, you really don't have that exposure, so.
True.
I appreciate being here.
They say a bundle of sticks is harder to break than a single stick. So, if we can turn into a bundle of sticks and work within our communities, then we can't be touched. Like all of us, meaning as a whole. So, Yolanda, if you walk into, which I feel you have, our blessings, but, seeing you on the 17th district county commission. Current problems that you are going to fix that the current administration is not doing? What is that and how do you look to move forward with making it better?
So, I'm big on advocacy. It's been my, the trumpet that I've, you know, touted the last going on 10 years is about advocacy. Sometimes that's really all it requires. So, for me, I'm not seeing the level of advocacy and the level of engagement that I feel could easily be had at the county commission level. I look around the state, I look around the county, the state, as well as the country for good examples of what, you know, a strong, forward-thinking county commissioner could bring. And I'm seeing great examples. We have a wonderful county commissioner who represents the city of Pontiac right now here in Oakland County. And then, there's a number of folks I can think of in like Colorado, portions of like Montana, different states like that, where they're going beyond just showing up at meetings. You know, they're engaged with their constituents in different ways. They're maybe even doing recognitions, you know? So, perhaps there's a nonprofit and a for-profit each month I'd like to recognize. And then, at the end of the year, have some kind of gala where perhaps we raise money for a particular cause that's important to the constituents in District 17. So, again, I just feel like there's so much opportunity to really be a leader at the county level for your particular district. And it's, like I said, low-hanging fruit. Requires very little in terms of funding. Again, I mentioned IG, Facebook, these things like that, which can provide engagement with people whenever they're ready for the engagement. So, I'm looking to really bolster that in the digital space. My seniors are also important to me. I think now, if nothing else, we really been, it's been exposed how our seniors are disenfranchised and no one's really shouting out and looking for them, looking out for them. When we think about the nursing homes and the facilities that they're in, we've got to do better as a society because my goal is to, one day, become a 70-year-old perhaps, or an 80-year-old. And it would just be so devastating to think that I would be left just hanging, you know? So, whatever we can do now while we're young and spry to make sure that, you know, we put some supports in there that, you know, policy-wise, that are gonna protect our seniors, that's, that's big for me.
Why is it, do you think that the current administration leaves these, this low-hanging fruits still on the vine?
Well, I dare not say generational because I know a lot of folks 60-plus who are very technical. You know, they can download scans and whatever. So, I'm sad to say that I think it's a little bit of complacency. Our current county commissioner in District 17 has been in the job since about 2009, 2010. And again, I feel it's important that we encourage our elected leaders to engage us, not just when it's time for, you know, the ballots to be pulled. So, I do, I think it's, really boils down to complacency.
Our last guest, Gabby, said that he believes that politicians should be in the seat and then out of the seat. So, they go back to their regular lives. So, they come from the community, they serve their time, they make a change, and then they go back. Are you looking to be a career politician or are you looking to make a difference?
Right, so I definitely want to make a difference. And the part, it's one of those gray areas, like, am I pro-term limits? Am I anti-term limits? Because we've seen some tragic examples of term limits at the state level where folks are there for two terms. They gut education, you know, they gut services, and, you know, then they're termed out with no accountability. But then, I also look at, you know, judges, for example, who are there for decades and decades and decades. Or prosecutors, or, you know, just numbers of numbers of people. So, I do like the idea of letting the people decide. So, if a person runs and they get re-elected, you know, then the people have decided. But I do believe we have to rein in some of the campaign spending. You know, maybe because I'm looking, you know, in your audience, for example, there may be people who want to run and they just don't feel they're equipped because they don't have $100,000 war chest that they've developed. So, if we could find a mechanism to even the playing field a little bit so that people can run and not, you know, feel like they have to raise hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars for, you know, some of these local races. I think we'd be much better off as a society and have fewer instances where people are the same folks in that seat for five, 10 years. So, my objective is to, they always say it takes a year or two to learn the job. So, certainly, I would imagine two terms. But I feel like, once you've learned, for example, on the school board, I've learned so much. I know people in our state who've been on the school board 30 years. And I'm thinking, "Why aren't you running for state rep or state senator?" I mean, you're what we need to hear from, but again.
Don't you want to aspire to be, do something?
So, I feel like folks should take what they've learned on the school board, run for another office, use what they've learned, run for another office. So, it's my objective to, whole offices, long-term, different offices, but secondary to my career. My career, I definitely believe it is business management and ownership. I definitely wanted to make that my thing while also leading.
You also, off-camera, you mentioned that, that you are running as a Democrat, but you're a disruptor. And you talked a little bit about disrupting the, what the Democratic Party, you don't always agree with the Democratic Party. Why don't you elaborate on that a little bit?
So, again, you know, we're so polarized in our society right now. I have always prided myself on being a very independent thinker. And I can recall in the, in my high school years, telling my grandparents how, "One day, I'm gonna be a Republican," I used to say. And they'd be like, "Not in this house." So, again, that's that cultural space too, you know? They were not trying to hear that. But I always wanted to be open to the practice of not just being so close-minded. And so, from then, from then on, I've really been an independent. And voted independently, thought independently, campaigned independently. And as school board members, we're actually nonpartisan. So, that's been excellent. The last 10 years, I haven't had to do the whole party man.
It's a good exercise, really.
It's great. I really feel like school boards should be the. It's great. I really feel like, uh, school boards should be the first, uh, elected office people have, because it really helps you to get outside of that, um, dichotomy of, you know, Republican or Democrat. And so, um, I am running as a Democrat. I, you know, you have to be pragmatic. I know in District Seventeen, um, in November, it's gonna be very challenging for someone to win as a Republican in District Seventeen. So for me, um, August fourth is definitely the, the mainstay. Um, I'm hoping to, you know, win bigly.
Yeah, we hope so too.
Um, and then, you know, from that, being able to build relationships across the aisle. Because at that point, it becomes a matter of, like we talked about just a moment ago, where you're gonna eventually have to coalesce.
Yep.
And, and work together.
Yep.
So I think that that's gonna make me stand out in November.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because folks will know that, and that's why I mentioned, I'm not a, I, I'm, I'm a bit of a disruptor, because although my family has always been Democrats, they've always voted Democrat. Um, they just weren't the traditional, um, meeting attender, you know, Dem meetings and party club meetings. But they were voting regularly and, um, certainly engaged. And so for me, to come and not be a party darling, um, you know, it is a disruption for them. And it's a disruption that we faced in sixteen, you know? There's, there's opportunities we missed there. Um, so I'm hoping twenty twenty, we get it, we get it right and that we're speaking to, to people who are willing to work with folks.
Any, any events coming up for Yolanda? Anything, any campaign events that people can know about that you want to let them do?
Well, um, today's the first, and the election is Tuesday, the fourth. And so really, my momentum is gonna be Tuesday.
Okay.
Um, so we talk about the event. Um, this is the big dance, um, on Tuesday. So, um, folks, uh, I'm, I'm looking for folks who might want to help at the polls.
Sure.
We're very, we're gonna be very confidently doing social distancing, so much like Anthony just did. You know, you're kind of just holding a sign. You're not running up to people passing in literature like that, you know, in years past. Um, so that's the main thrust. And then, um, I'm optimistic, you know, keeping my faith and hope that it'll be a win for me. Um, you know, and then, of course, we can celebrate on the fifteenth, that your, your event.
Cool. We could do that. We could do that. Is there anything we may have missed, um, that you would like the viewers to know? We are, normally, this takes weeks before this goes out, so we are gonna get this in so that this is before the elections on Tuesday, the primary, uh, so we will get that out before. So whoever's watching this, you are seeing this before Tuesday.
Yeah.
Um, anything that we may have missed for the viewers to know? Anything about Yolanda history or forward?
Thank you. Well, I, first and foremost, want to make sure folks know how to find me. So that's voteyolanda.org. Pretty easy to, um, put together. The spelling's right here for everyone. Um, also, I'm, um, an open, you know, an open door type of person. So I actually have a, um, cell phone dedicated to constituents. So that phone number is two four eight, three eight five, two nine two seven. And then finally, I just really want to impress upon your viewers that, um, the work that I've done on the Southfield Board of Education is very, um, complex. It's decision-making on the fly that affects, you know, families at the very grassroots. And so the, you know, to juxtapose myself and my competition, um, we're, we're not doing ribbon cuttings, you know, we're not worried about, um, a sidewalk here and there. We're actually looking at brass tacks, which I believe is our, our young people, um, their future, and then the futures of their families. So if I can leave anything with the, the viewers and the listeners, it's just simply that for the last ten years, I've been focused on supporting families,